Okay, we'll call the Oxford Planning Board meeting for September 26, 2022 to order. First item on the agenda, first of all, let me ask, is anybody planning on recording the meeting? Okay. So, in addition to tonight's video recording, I don't know why I said that, video recording on cable, Oxford Cable Access pursuant to the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Those making the recording must inform the Chair. All attendees are therefore advised if such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. So, the first item on the agenda is the plan's not requiring subdivision approval, so we'll turn it over to the Vice Chair, Richard Escholos.
Okay, this, we actually accepted the submission on this plan last week, didn't we? Or did we just turn it back?
We turned it back.
Turned it back, okay, so I'll go through it just like its print. Okay, we have, on 60 Mount Pleasant Street, we have a Form A dated 8/22/22 from Hanley Tully Family Trust, 2016, at 60 Mount Pleasant Street, Oxford, Mass. For a property assesses map 51 parcel B11 in the R1 District. Deed to property recorded, it was the District Registry of Deeds Book 55503, page 183. We got a revised plan that showed the 50-foot frontage as the previous A&R on this lot showed, not 49.99 feet, so they corrected what we picked up at our, when this was submitted. The only thing they didn't do is they do show that the shed is going outside the parcel A and parcel B as proposed. But it doesn't affect the items required for a subdivision approval. They're combining parcel B and parcel A together.
They meet all the criteria.
It meets everything.
Okay.
The R factor is the same as it previously was, it didn't get any better, but it didn't get any worse. Entertained a motion to approve this A&R.
Ashley, can I point out that it didn't get any better? And it, the R factor, it didn't get any better, didn't get any worse, but it's still not in compliance with the zoning.
Correct. But it doesn't, but it doesn't affect what an A&R.
Well, we're creating a new lot.
We're adding to the existing lot. And what it was is, when we first did these, I don't think we had R factors as a requirement. I think it got updated.
Yeah, so R factor of .4 or greater would allow for the issuance of a building permit.
Yep.
Now, certainly the structures are all existing now, and I believe the R factor is around .2.
It is .2.
And as Tony put up on the board, you see the original lot is in purple? In the lot A, it's going to show the pool.
Right.
The additional area for the pool and back.
Yeah.
They do share amenities, they share a driveway.
Yeah.
I don't even know if they had a common driveway. I guess the history of this property was, it was two houses on one lot. Okay? They sold one of them. So, anyway, what's the desire of the board?
Again, it, it does meet the criteria for an A&R, it has the frontage, so I'll make the motion we approve the plan.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
You'll second?
Why not?
Okay. Okay, further discussion? If being on the roll call vote?
I vote aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimously. From the five, five members here, carried.
So, Tony, I'll put this on the back table?
Sure.
All right. So I don't spill my coffee on it.
Good idea.
Turn that back.
Thank you.
Okay. Turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Rich. It being 7:05, we're going to continue the public hearing for 27 Industrial Park Road East. The application is for a special permit, site plan review, and approval, storm auto management permit, and land disturbance permit. Applicant is ZB Battery Dev Co. LLC. Owner, Mark Hattabo, and I believe, Tony, you're going to bring us up to date.
Yes.
We got something here for that, right? Tony?
Yes.
They have, they haven't filled out, I mean, I didn't know when we were going to extend it to, but they filled it out already.
Apparently, they'd like to, they're looking for an extension, haven't done the official, but you're pretty confident that we'll get that from them shortly?
Yes, we will, we will.
And they'd like to be on the agenda for the next meeting?
The meeting of October 24th.
October 24th.
Yes. And did provide sort of an update of where the applicant is as of last week. They are, they've received the peer reviewers' comments, Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering, and they've been working to, to make some modifications, corrections to the, to the plan. They've had their survey crew out last week to take care of some discrepancies that, that Jeff found, and they have not received the revised survey yet, but once they do, they'll be able to address the civil work that some comments were raised from, from Jeff Walsh. Once they receive the survey, they can revise the other smaller items on the site plan with their civil engineers. And they originally requested to continue until October 10th, and my correspondence via email to him mentioned October 10th being, being a holiday, so the next meeting is October 24th, and he said October 24th would be fine. We also do have Graves to assist with general review of the bylaw regarding this battery storage, so we should also have an update for that meeting on the 24th as well. With respect to the calendar, we do have two items already for October 24th, one at 7:05, one at 7:10. 7:15 is the next available slot.
Okay. Is anybody here for this meeting, for that public hearing, for the battery company? Just want to make sure, if you saw it on the agenda and decided to come in, so, nobody? All right. Any discussion from the board?
I think we, we did get some correspondence from Board of Health, right? Did we? Thought I read that. At the folder on that, I thought, I thought she was questioning the...
Oh, is that this right here?
Leach Field and the...
Tony, you said this is all that, right?
That is Cumberland Farms.
Oh.
Should be one of the first folders here. And you are correct.
Questioning the...
And the Board of Health agent has been in, in contact with the applicant.
I don't know where I saw it, because it wasn't in front of us, but I thought I saw a couple of things they questioned.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it's the storage issue, I didn't know they would have restrooms there and stuff, too?
No, 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 it's, it's about, it's about what's existing on the ground. They want to make sure that nothing is disturbed.
Yes.
They want it documented on the...
Location of the Leach Field and the Septic, and, and hence some of the revisions.
I don't know where I saw it, but...
So, is that information also sent to the client?
Yes.
Not client, but the proponent?
Yes, the client's been in discussion with, with the Board of Health Agent.
All right. So you've got plenty of time to resolve that. All right. Any other discussions?
Do we need to sign this or anything?
No, they have to. They signed it. I guess we could sign the rest of it and send it back to them. I mean, basically, what we got to fill out on there is what we extending it to, and when we're going to have our next meeting, continued public hearing.
Yeah, if the, if the board wishes, I'm happy to complete the, as Vice Chair Scholos stated, I'm, I'm happy to complete the, the dates once you approve that, and I'll also provide it to the clerk as well.
Okay, is that fine with everybody?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to continue this public hearing to October 24th at 7:15.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Jeff.
Yeah, let me continue and also accept the applicant's request for a continuance of time of action to, what's it at right now?
The action date is November 20th.
Push it to the end of the year.
Yeah. Well, it's December 30th.
Yeah.
2022. Okay? So that gives them time to address stuff, that gives us time and make sure everything gets addressed and...
Yeah. Could probably only have one meeting.
Do you still second that?
Yeah, I'll second that, yeah.
Okay. Seconded by Jeff. Any, any discussion? All right, call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
I say aye.
I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. All right. Propose, it being 7:10, we have a public hearing for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment under Chapter 3. We have a, do I have a thing to read, right?
Yes, there is a legal notice right on the inside. Leave, leave on the left side.
7:10, excellent. Okay, I'll read the legal notice. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 5, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 26th, 2022, at 7:10 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room at the Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Massachusetts, to consider an article on the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on October 5th, 2022. The proposed article is a zoning amendment that would strike out and replace it in its entirety, Section 3.9, Apartments Accessory/In-Law of Chapter 3, Use Regulations of the Oxford Zoning Bylaw. The new language would allow for the construction of additional living space as an in-law apartment provided that the new space is contained within an existing owner-occupied, single-family house. Change would remove the need for a special permit by the Planning Board. The corresponding subsections pertaining to 3.9 would be amended to allow for the change. A copy of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment may be viewed at the Oxford Town Hall in the office of the Town Clerk or the Land Management Department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the place, date, and time designated, or submit written comments before the date of the hearing to the Planning Board at 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. 01540. All right, Tony, if you want to give us an overview of what...
Sure, sure. So, the purpose, as you've read, Mr. Chairman, is exactly it, it's to allow additional living spaces to, to be created for in-law uses, provided, without the need of a special permit, provided that it's all done within the interior of an existing owner-occupied, single-family home. With that, up here on the screen is the draft bylaw, which has been reviewed by, by Town Council, and their comments were incorporated. I'd like to just do a walk-through here. Some of the parts will look identical to the existing, and I'll point those out, and I'll show you what, what we've done as potential changes for your consideration. This is drafted as Article 13 in the Town Meeting Warrant, which is the last article, but, but is to amend the Oxford zoning bylaws by deleting its existing Section 3.9 of Chapter 3, Use Regulations in Its Entirety, and replacing it with the following new section, 3.9 Apartments and Additional Living Spaces. The purpose of the bylaw has essentially remained the same. Under definitions, we added additional living space, which, under this definition, living space contained within a single-family dwelling that may contain a kitchen, sanitary facility, and sleeping area. Free passage from the main living area into and about the additional living area shall be permitted without restrictions. That was the only change that we did in the definitions. Under 3.9.3, what we added was a series of bullets here under additional living space. Excuse me for one second. Let me just grab this keyboard here. Maybe I can. That's pretty good. So, a series of bullets here. Bullet number one, additional living space shall only be permitted within the interior of a single-family dwelling located in a residential zoning district. The space shall be devoted to private, independent living that could be recognized as a space by family members or caretakers. The space shall not exceed 800 square feet. Adding floor space for additional living space must comply to all zoning dimensional requirements. Free passage from the main living area into and about the secondary area shall be permitted without restrictions. Additional living space can be occupied in conjunction with the primary living space, but cannot be offered as conventional rental housing unit. The owner of record must occupy the home as his/her principal place of residence. There shall be no separate address for the additional space. Separate utilities shall not be allowed. Three more. There shall be only one mailbox for the entire home. The exterior look shall remain as a single-family. And last, the construction of any additional living space shall comply and conform to the Massachusetts State Building Code. Application procedure, keeping in mind that this section also has the language for in-law apartments, right? So the application procedure is not applicable to, to the additional living space, but this is a special procedure as we're, we operate under for in-laws and for accessories. Remember, accessories would still be allowed under GB. Administration enforcement is the same, and 3.9.7, accessory in-law apartments in existence before the adoption of this section, remains the same. Conflict with other laws and severability are all the same. There is one bullet that do want to share, too, that was, that I do want to highlight that was changed, and I wanted to get the feedback here. Pardon me for one moment. Under the in-law apartments, ah, here it is. And this pertains to the in-law apartment itself. So at least two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit are available for use by the owner occupant, and one off-street parking space for the in-law apartment. Parking space should be located to the side or to the, to the rear of the structure to the extent feasible. The, the question here is that one off-street parking space for the traditional in-law, don't know if the desire is to keep that at two, but we had some discussion that one would be appropriate.
One for the, the new, the in-law?
The in-law.
Two for the existing house and one for the in-law.
In our experience, we hasn't, we haven't seen a, a need for two for the in-law.
Yeah, I think one...
So.
I have no problem.
So, so that's all in, in a nutshell. So that's all I have.
Be right with you. Anybody, any questions from the board? Okay, so we'll open it up to the, if you could come up and just state your name on the little microphone there?
And address.
And, and address, right? I was going to say that.
Michael Jermaine.
Yep.
49 Old Southbridge Road.
All right.
Does this say, I can put a second house on my property?
No.
No.
Right, all right?
Correct.
It's only an addition.
This is if you have a house, and let's say you have a, a lot of room in your basement or another part that's already in your house, and you want to convert that where, you know, your, your brother would live, or your mother, or your father, or...
I could add on to my house.
That's a different, that's a different procedure, right?
Different, so this is just redoing your already existing interior, yeah?
Right.
Interior, yes.
Okay. The rest of them have to be a special permit through this board.
And really, one of the reasons, correct me if I'm wrong, that we did this, really was to kind of cut a little red tape, you know, so you didn't have to come in here and jump through all the flaming hoops just to do a little, you know, a little bedroom for your mother, your father in the basement, so you could go right to the Land Management Department and just take care of it.
Okay, this is completely existing?
Yes.
Okay.
Not changing the structure that you have.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? Can I really say flaming hoop? I didn't mean that. All right, any other, any other comments from the, from the, from the public? No? All right, so, so we're making a motion to put it on the...
We got to close the public hearing, right?
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Made by Rich, seconded by Chris. Any discussion on that? Call for the vote, I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Now, do we, we're voting to put it on the...
Recommendation.
No, it's already, it's already on the warrant, so I'll make a motion that we give a favorable recommendation.
Article 13.
For Article 13 on the town law.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda being 7:15, another public hearing. I'll just read the, I'll read the public hearing notice. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 5, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 26th, 2022, at 7:15 in the Selectman's Meeting Room at the Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass., to consider an article on the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on October 5th, 2022. Proposed article is an amendment to the Oxford Zoning Map. The amendment would extend the Village Business District from the corner of Main Street and Sutton Ave. to Interstate 395, spanning along both sides of Sutton Avenue at a measurement of 50 feet from the property boundaries directly abutting Sutton Ave. A copy of the proposed zoning map amendment may be viewed at the Oxford Town Hall in the Oxford, in the office of the Town Clerk or the Land Management Department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the place, date, and time designated, or submit written comments before the date of the hearing to the Planning Board at 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. 01540. And again, Tony, if you could give us an overview of what you, what we're proposing.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I've, as we can see on the screen, provided a, a larger, zoomed in of the proposed extension of the Village Business District, and it is along the stretch, as you stated, extending the Village Business or the VB District down from the, where it is existing, Main Street, corner of Main and Sutton, and bringing it down to, to I-395 by a distance of 50 feet, as you read, from the property lines affecting over a dozen properties. The, the mechanics here with that, should a property owner elect to, or desire to take advantage of the Village Business District, they would seek a special permit through the Planning Board to get that extension of, of the VB or the consideration of the Village Business District for their parcel. The rationale behind extending it was because there is some options under the VB that is unique and not necessarily apparent, apparent in the GB, or available in the GB, I should say, in the General Business District, which is the, the ability to have mixed use, the ability to, to have standalone residential. And so, the VB was adopted not too long ago, right, several years ago, but taking advantage of that newer zoning, if you will. And what this does by split zoning, it gives, again, more flexibility for a property owner to, to, to consider VB or general business. And there's still some safeguards using the split zoning, which, again, would require the special of this board even prior to whatever uses might be under the VB. We did send notice out to all of the property owners to, to share this information with them, and I did provide to the board a copy of, and it's in our zoning bylaw, of course, table number two, of uses allowed in the commercial districts, and showing both GB and VB. And once again, not, really not to be repetitive, but you can see on page 104, all of the residential options, from one-family detached dwelling all the way down to multi-use residential slash commercial. From an economic development side, there is vacancy along that stretch in particular, and from my conversations with, with some agents, property owners, there was a desire to, how could we find a way to be able to allow for residential in this area? And again, do think the VB will help strike that balance and that flexibility, so therefore, that's why we're, we're recommending this.
So I just want to say, just ask quick, if you, if you currently have a piece of land on that property, it's zone general business, right? So there, people aren't going to be losing any ability of their current use, right?
No, they would not be losing any ability.
So if anything, they're expanding their options.
Correct.
By, we're trying to expand your options by, by moving forward with this, so. And this isn't, if you don't understand, we're voting to, whether we're going to approve, not approve it, but endorse it at the town meeting, so this is not, you know, when we vote tonight, this is not it, so you still have to get the town people to vote on it, so. So I don't, any discussion from the board? Go ahead, Chris.
So, Tony, if you look on the allowed and the commercial districts, so the general, general business, so it has building materials, dealers, hardware stores, by permit lumber, retail nurseries, but if you look in the village, those aren't allowed, right?
Correct.
So currently, if there is a retail nursery there, because it was previously zoned general, it can stay.
Well, what's important here is that it's split zoned, so, so they, it can stay, and GB would still apply because it's the larger zoning district, and almost all of those properties.
I got you.
Maybe with the exception of one or two. And so they, it would, GB would still apply. If they wish, then, let's say they wanted to do mixed use, residential, commercial, which is what I've gotten as far as feedback, then, from staff, and if this were to be approved, we would recommend going under Village Business, but coming before the board for that special permit. Certainly, the GB is great for commercial uses. There's a whole array, there's, I think, over 50 or 60 different types of uses that are allowed under the commercial. They still get to take advantage of that. What it doesn't afford is under the residential, as I discussed.
Somebody wanted for an apartment above their business, a place, because they could do that if they...
Under the VB, yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Chris?
Nope.
Anybody else on the board? Okay, so we're going to open up, yeah, so we're going to open up to the public, so when I recognize, if you could come up and just say your name and your address, and then go ahead and ask your question through me, so we don't, you know, so, so who's first? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Deb McDonald, and I live at 4 Park Street, and I only know about this meeting because only one person on my street got the letter. And I'm wondering why we weren't all notified. I'm, I believe I'm in a butter, because I live at 4 Park Street, and I would think that I would probably definitely be someone that should have been notified of this. I did watch the meeting, the previous meeting, so I did know that there was something going on, but I was waiting for the letter to get more information.
Okay. Is your, were they only sent out to the people that are, that their property is affected by this?
Yes.
So are you within that? Do you own one of those pieces right along Sutton Ave?
I, no, I, I live on 4 Park Street, so I'm right around the corner, but number 9 Park Street was the only one that I know of on the street that got it, and she's across the street, I mean, excuse me, number 7. was the only one that I know of on the street that got it, and she's across the street, uh, I mean, excuse me, number seven. She's across the street from me on the other side, um, behind Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
So I'm wondering, it didn't make any sense to us when we found out, and then, and I talked to a few neighbors today, you know, I think for us to be, we should have known about it. We should have been informed through the mail. Right?
Okay, um, did...
So, so...
I, I don't know about that.
So the change is only fifty, it's fifty feet from, like, up on the edge of the wall, from each side of it. So if your property doesn't fall within that fifty feet...
You probably didn't get a letter.
You probably wouldn't get a letter, because it wouldn't be, the zone wouldn't change.
Didn't touch or concern your property?
Yeah.
And it's really, it's to give, it's to give the people that are on that fifty-foot strip the either-or option.
So it's only the people right on Sutton Ave?
Correct.
Those lots that are right on...
Right, your, your property is not going to be in the Village District.
Okay.
There's no impact on you whatsoever.
Number four, okay.
So that's why you probably wouldn't have gotten a letter.
Okay. I, yeah, but number seven did get a letter.
Yeah.
Which doesn't make, which didn't make any sense.
Well, maybe because of their butt, the Dunkin' Donuts.
No, because she, that's further down on Park Street. She's closer to Sutton Ave.
Closer to Sutton Ave.
But if you look, Deb, just the, the red striped section.
Yep.
That's the area that they're going to zone. You know, both VB and GB, so.
So it's not going to have any effect on Park Street at all?
No.
I think...
Well, only, only from fifty feet off of, um, Sutton Ave. Anybody, if you live along that street. But if you live beyond fifty feet, it won't affect you at all. Sorry.
It's the first lots on the street.
The first lots on the street, so it's the apartment building on the end.
Yeah, is it two? Is it two Park Street? There would be a...
A two.
Two, yeah.
Is Dunkin' Donuts, actually, both, it's now business, um, is Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
Or you're over here somewhere, right?
That's Park Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she's the second lot down.
It's only, it's only these, these property owners that actually front on Sutton Ave will be affected by this. And if you're back here, it won't affect you at all.
It won't affect you at all.
Okay. All right.
And, and the idea would be for, like, the apartment building?
Mm-hmm.
If they wanted to locate a small business on the first floor,
Mm-hmm.
but keep the apartments upstairs,
Mm-hmm.
that's, that's the idea.
Yeah, that's the ability they've got to.
And, and I can understand that, and I think that that's, you know, a good idea, but I would hate to see a big business get in there and make more traffic problems, because we have so many problems trying to get up that street as it is now, as everybody's aware of. So many accidents down there and all that, you know, you all, you know all of that.
Yep.
So, okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Tony.
The, the question of notice, I, I do appreciate, I did mention at the last meeting what the requirements are. Um, we opted to send out notice, um, but it's not a requirement under the state law for zone changes, just so the public's aware. But we did opt to, at least to send to the individual property owners, as we've done in the past as well. But by no means, um, the more notice, the better, certainly, no, no disagreement. For whatever reason why that was the case with respect to the other address for the Downham Park, I'd have to check the abutters list we got from downstairs, but that is... You know, that's, yeah, I don't know.
Uh, anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Valerie Doust. I live at Seventeen Park Street.
Okay.
And I know you seem to feel, and maybe you're right, that by changing it to, from general business to VB, it's going to help us. But the people that live on Park Street, Walcott Street, and Lynn Street cannot get out of their houses, out of this street. If you, if you're going to try to change something like this, I think you seriously need to consider a traffic light, something to help us get out. It's nothing, and I would encourage you all to come over and have coffee, if you'd like, and try to get out of Park Street at between four and seven PM on a weekday. In the morning, it's difficult. In the afternoon, it's difficult. On a Saturday, it's impossible. You've got everybody from Dudley and Charlton coming through, going to Market Basket, Home Depot, and we just sit there. And you take your life in your hands trying to turn out of the street either left or right. I also find it upsetting that one person on the street got a letter. They shouldn't have got a letter from what you said, but they did, and nobody else did.
Well...
I, I understand only the first fifty, yeah, the fifty feet, which is nothing
Well, those are the people, really, that are, that property affected by this potential zoning change.
Mm-hmm.
And just so you know, we're, um, we're not changing that property from general business to, um, Village Business. It's still going to be general business for the most part. Because this is only putting a sliver across their property, but gives them an option to apply that, that use if they want. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, Village, general business is a lot more, you can do a lot more business, there are a lot more options for business, right?
Yes.
For general business.
Yes.
So if they choose that, if they choose Village Residential, it's actually going to be less, it could be potentially less of a use?
Well, nobody would want, I'm sorry, but nobody would want to buy it, because they, those poor people can't even get out of their driveways. The drive, the, the lots are so small, the driveways are so small, you can't even turn around, so what you have to do is back up onto Sutton Ave, which is against the law. But that's what happens. And, and someone from this town, and I know this probably isn't even the place to discuss it, but somebody from this town is going to get killed in that area unless the planning people of this town look ahead and think about what's going to happen in there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. One more time for the board, anybody? Any comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we close the public hearing. I'll second that.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Jeff. Uh, any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Is there a motion to, to recommend this, uh, proposed, uh, looking for the...
Proposed extension.
Extension to, uh...
To Village Business District.
What number is it on the warrant?
Twelve.
Article twelve.
Okay, so, motion made by Jeff to, um,
Recommend it.
Recommend this to the town meeting. Any second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mark. Any more discussion? All right, call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is a, uh, for two thirty-five Main Street in Fairlawn Ave, application for site plan review. Uh, am I really going to put this whole thing up now? The applicant is Cumberland Farms, Inc. The property owner is two thirty-three Main Street, LLC, VH, VSH Realty, Inc., AKA Cumberland Farms, Inc. The applicant is seeking to combine two parcels of land, two thirty-five Main Street and Fairlawn Ave. The applicant proposes to raise all structures and redevelop both parcels as one development site with new gasoline pumps, convenience store, parking, and associated site amenities. Property is located within the Village Business Zoning District as identified on Assessors Map thirty-three E, Parcel P zero-one and Parcel P fourteen. Uh, so, if you want to start us off, Tony?
Sure, the, the applicant is here. Uh, we've started the the initial peer review work, um, for Stormwater. And we will be getting a peer review for traffic. And, uh, anticipate that I have a report back in a couple weeks. The applicant will also be going to the ZBA on October sixth. And, um, the, we'll also be getting comments from the Historical Commission, whereas under the Village Business District, signage requires, um, recommendation from the, Mr. Commission to the Building Inspector, should he issue a permit for signage. That's all that it adds, Chairman.
Okay, so just for, if anybody's wondering, it's here, um, obviously Cumberland Farms is part of the project, the, the existing building. They're also planning on purchasing the, uh, the old lobster, the lobster place in back, and the dance place, which is one same building. And then that other Sunnyside Farms, I think it used to be called. So basically, removing all the buildings, I'm, I'm not taking...
You're doing a great job, keep going.
So demolishing all the buildings, creating, building a brand-new, brand-new facility there. So, uh, that being said...
We're going to say the same thing, sure.
You can just...
For the record, yeah, of course. Uh, Tom Reedy, Attorney with Bacon Wilson, out of AMR, is here on behalf of Cumberland Farms. With me this evening are Civil Engineer Phil Henry. We've also got our Traffic Engineer Erin Fredette. We've got our, uh, Developer Chuck Meek from First Hartford, and then Delina Borchevsky from Cumberland Farms. So, yeah, I, I'm not going to steal too much of Phil's thunder, but what you've got up on the screen is the existing conditions plan. Here we are at the corner of Main and, and Fairlawn, looking to do what I think is a really great redevelopment of the site. Um, you've got an existing, uh, Cumberland Farms, and then, as the chairman noted, a couple of other businesses. It's a complete, uh, raise and rebuild, and Phil, I'll just turn it over to you to walk through, uh, maybe existing conditions, and then really what's proposed, and then just to piggyback on what Tony had mentioned, in addition to zoning board of appeals, Historical Commission, we're also going to need an amendment to the underground storage tank license, so we're going to be in front of the, the Select Board, the Board of Selectmen as well, so that kind of rounds out, um, all the relief that we need to make this happen. So with that, I'll turn it over to Phil.
So what I'll do is I'll, um, I'll give a brief overview on the existing conditions and the proposed conditions.
Let me see if I can kind of aim that microphone at you.
Sure.
Thank you.
I will say that we initially met informally back, I think in May, Tony, with all the department heads, uh, DPW, Fire, Police. And, and what you'll see was, was a result of, of that meeting, so, which I thought was very helpful. So uh, with that being said, the existing condition, so, uh, I'm sure everyone is familiar with the site. Main Street is, is here, Fairlawn runs up and down on the page. The existing gas station is this inside parcel here. Uh, and then the, the additional land is this, is this wraparound piece here that stretches onto Fairlawn and also has frontage on, on Main Street. The, the total assemblage totals about just under one acre, so it's not a, it's not a very large lot, lot. Um, the idea is to remove all structures on site, all asphalt, all septic systems, all utilities. Um, I, I will note that, uh, those of you that are familiar with the site, there's a, there's a significantly wide, um, driveway here, curb cut here, with some Jersey construction areas, uh, that, that kind of surround uh, the gas station, and, and there's also a write-in-only, uh, cut here, as well as, there's a, a two-way access up on, up on Fairlawn. Uh, the, the proposed condition includes a forty-four hundred convenience store set, set back off of Main Street, uh, and sort of along the side street on, on Fairlawn. The, uh, the, the access will be more direct and, and, and more consistent with industry standard, and that would be one driveway that is, uh, twenty-four feet wide, or maybe it was twenty-eight feet wide here, just to get truck access. Further set back off of Main Street. As you'll note, uh, there is no write-in-only curb cut proposed here. That was one of the conversation sticking points of the informal meeting. Uh, instead, there is, there'll, and there'll be one full-axis curb cut here that uh, we think meets, uh, mass DOT standards, which is a twenty-four-foot-wide curb cut with thirty-five, with thirty-foot radii extending onto the street, onto Main Street. We are also extending uh, the sidewalk that, right now, I think you could argue traverses through the property. We are maintaining a con, or we are proposing a concrete sidewalk that is maintained within the right-of-way, and then kind of hooks back into that e- existing, um, uh, walk area, uh, that, that stretches across Fairlawn. Uh, we are also defining the, you know, the street nicer, uh, in the, in the, in the, in this condition here, which will have an opportunity to add some landscape. All in all, we are increasing landscaping or reducing, um, asphalt area on, on, on this project. Uh, so going back into the site here, I'll walk you around the site. A convenience store is located here, front door. Uh, we have a total of thirty-eight parking spaces, thirty of it striped, and then eight at the four pumps themselves, which is actually eight fueling positions, because each dispenser is two sides. Underground storage tanks are located on the left-hand side here. There's also be an air tower that is located on the left-hand side. Trash area on the left side of the, of the convenience store here. And then some accessory spaces along the front, uh, and then we have our freestanding sign, which is substantially in the same location as, as the existing sign. Utilities, for the most part, will come off of Fairlawn, except for gas, I believe. I think gas is only in Main Street and was recently, recently installed in there a few years back. And then the septic system, which is to be, uh, submitted to the Health Department, uh, will be located in this grass area back here. Um, Stormwater, uh, as I said, will be, there'll be a reduction of impervious area, however, we are adding, we are proposing an infiltration system, subsurface infiltration system, um, in the front yard of the, of the convenience store, which will have an overflow, and which we think meets local and state standards. So that, that's the general overview. I'll, I'm, I'm not the architect, but I, I have the ability to scroll to the renderings, and I will show you what the, the, so that is the front facing, if you're on Main Street, that's what the structure is proposed to look like. Uh, this is from, if you were standing on the underground storage tanks on the left-hand side. This is if you were standing on top of the proposed leaching field. And then this is if you were back on Fairlawn. This is behind the building here. And this is on Fairlawn straight ahead. We also have photo simulations that, um, Cumberland Farms, whoops, that's not it. That Cumberland Farms hires a firm to, that's not it either. There we go. So that is the, the existing condition, obviously. So this is from, from Main Street, looking, looking back into the site.
I was just going to say, that looks really nice.
Yeah. So this is, what, what's proposed here is, is sort of a photo simulation. They, they sort of insert what the site plan, they take our site plan, our grading plan, and they sort of insert it as a, as a photo simulation, so that's looking on the, on the left side along, along Main Street. And then this is at the intersection of Fairlawn and Main Street, existing condition. And then that is the proposed condition.
At night.
At night.
There we go.
Nice touch, nice touch.
I don't know what happened there, Tony. Same thing. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to escape. Okay, so that's, that's the proposed condition. So, you know, we think it's ob, it's an obvious upgrade over the existing condition. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any more specific questions, if you'd like.
I got a couple, Craig.
Sure. Yeah, um, what's the timeframe for something like this, from start to finish? For construction? Yeah. Typically, it's, it's an eighteen-week schedule. Eighteen weeks, so three months? Eighteen weeks. No, four and a half. Four and a half months. Depending on winter conditions. And that's from demolition on, or? Yes, from start to finish. And is this...
Demolition won't be tough, you just blow it.
Yeah, that's, that'll take about a day. Is this snow, snow removal on there, is this? Yeah, there, there are snow storage areas. Okay. That we have snow storage areas located throughout the property. Okay. And we have a note that um, is obviously enforceable, uh, on the approved plans, that if, if, if snow storage cannot fit in the designated areas, that it should be brought off-site. There'll be a lot more snow area, snow storage areas post-development than, than pre-development. I'll go back to the site plan.
I had a hard time dealing with snow with all those Jersey barriers.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chris.
Oh, so I just have a couple of questions. So as far as, um, gas pumps, you're not increasing the number of gas pumps, you're just leaving on the...
Correct, there's, there's...
They're just reconfigured.
Okay, I'm just kind of surprised, because you have a lot of area. I would have... Like, is the one over twenty in North Oxford, there's two, four, like, there's eight of them there.
Double die. Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's not that much area. This is one of the... This is one of the smaller sites that we see. If there was more area, we would do it.
I was just surprised, I thought it'd be more than that.
So yeah, so these are, this is called a single dive configuration, but the intent is unlike the existing condition where it's sort of an inline gas pumps, we want each driver to have independent access in and out of the dispenser. So that's why there's a drive aisle in front and a drive aisle in back. So because of that, that takes up space, so that's the trade-off. But you know, there will be eight dispensers, four dispensers, each having dual sides.
And on your plans, there's also a farmhouse kitchen and a Ria's Pizzeria. So is that like inside of the Cumberland Farms?
Yeah, that's built in, which will have your internal grease traps, external grease trap before it goes to the septic. If that's what your question was.
Yeah, so are those like, like the farmhouse kitchen, I imagine is the Cumberland Farms.
Yeah, that is part of their in-house program.
And the Ria's Pizzeria, that's.
That's an in-house.
In-house, okay.
It's their branding.
Okay, I've never seen that, so I just.
Yeah, it's sort of new.
Okay.
So can you just make sure, because I've been to the existing, make sure that you put those concrete posts right next to the travel lane, so I can't get my car in there? So I have to, you know.
You mean the boughs in front of the building?
Oh yeah, I love those. Trying to come in at the angle and. And where?
A couple cars get damaged.
Where is the corn gonna be sold, that's what I want to know.
The corn?
Yeah. Where's the corn man gonna set up?
Inside on the back, right.
So in the corner, in the corner of the lot, it used to be the corn man.
Yeah.
He's gone. He's been expelled.
Unfortunately, I think he might have passed away too.
He has. Is there gonna be a roof over the pumps?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there'll be, like, it's a flat roof that will be over the pumps that will actually house the fire suppression system.
A canopy, right?
Yeah, canopy.
A canopy over.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. We talked, this whole property has been placed inside the Village Business District, where gas pumps and fast food places are not allowed. Okay, now I know we're replacing a gas station with a gas station, basically. That has some other fast food options. How did we address that? You follow what I'm saying, Tony, because these things come up? Because we created a Village Business District that this thing used to be in the GB that went further. Okay. I just want to know the rationale that we're gonna use here, so we know that.
The Tony determination letter was provided by the building commissioner. And although I don't believe the board has the benefit of it, we'll send it out after this meeting. We made a determination that there was some relief that they needed to get under the GB. But yes, the gas station was existing and need a retail, some change to it. If I may, I don't have a benefit letter in front of me right now, but I'll refer it to the attorney as well.
I just think it should be part of the package. These things should be part of the package, because we know what we went through on Depot Road.
Any more discussion from Mark, anything?
Do we just need to schedule this for a hearing?
Well, I was gonna see if anybody in the.
Okay.
Audience would like to say something. Right, I can do that, right?
If you wish, this is traditional site plan review.
This is site plan review, we didn't schedule any public hearing on this particular matter.
And we've got, so for completeness, you know, the stormwater is out for peer review. We've got our traffic engineer here as well. I don't know if you want a brief overview, that's going to be out for peer review as well. And so we're expected to come back, I think October 24th and hopefully get an approval then, once all the peer reviews come back.
We're waiting for that type of documentation, plus your approval from the zoning board.
ZBA, yeah, yeah, so October 6th, we're in front of them. As Tony mentioned, we've documented and we've got, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I was just thinking, if anybody wanted to ask a question.
Yeah.
Are we objecting to that? Does anybody in the audience want to ask a question? Yes, sir, come on up.
Since we have a traffic engineer, we have. On your picture, like you made for an old Southwood Road. On the picture you had coming from north to south, which you didn't show coming onto Fair Lawn Ave, we have a crosswalk with a barrier that you cannot exit Fair Lawn to the left already with most cars, no minor trailer or a truck or a tanker truck. And you're not saying how much access is gonna actually use this? And if you're coming up with your tankers and everything and your refrigeration trucks and all your supply trucks into this main entrance, are you gonna be able to turn around here and come out this entrance to get out? Because you cannot make this barrier at all. Personally, I don't know, they put that there instead of here, but that's the way the roadway is at this time. And it's already been a major traffic issue with accidents and trouble. And I think you're only gonna make it worse.
That's actually an excellent question, something to look into, right? How the trucks can get in and out.
Yeah, well, we're actually showing it.
They do have it somewhere around here.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, so.
But you don't show the picture picture. But I mean, to make that corner, even if you put a lawn tractor on a trailer on the back of a car, you cannot make that corner. And it's like getting out on Sutton Ave, which we previously discussed for the other issues. You cannot get from left heading north out of there without an issue, just with a regular car. You're taking your life in your hands. And if you're gonna start forcing people out of here, out of the gas station or trucks entering an accident, it's not gonna work, it's not feasible. Or you have to move this down here someplace and put one here or one there. I mean, the design for that was not good, but this is only gonna make it worse.
Yeah, so we're not proposing that tractor trailers will exit Fair Lawn, travel east.
You're not proposing that, you can drive and do it.
And then go north? So the intention is for, so we always want tractor trailers to make left-hand turns as they're traversing through the site. And that's what this tractor trailer does. After this right-hand turn into Fair Lawn, it goes lefts, lefts and lefts, which is why the tanks are positioned on the right-hand side of a would-be tractor trailer that is parked on site. So I don't disagree that this bull nose does stick out pretty far that, you know, even a regular vehicle truck would have to pay attention to make left. But surely it's done today. And so we think a regular car can, you know, can make that turn, so.
Like I said, you'll make a left-hand turn onto Fair Lawn, a left-hand turn into Parkin.
Yeah.
Left turn back onto Main.
Yep. Yeah, but we're not proposing, nor can a tractor trailer even get to make a right-hand turn there.
Yeah, no, you couldn't, yeah.
And just so you know, the town has a review. Everything gets sent out to, is it Graves that's reviewing it?
For transportation, Traffic TEC is reviewing it.
Okay, so we have a consultant or peer review company that will review all of their information. And it's good that you brought that up, you know, now it's in the works and people are thinking about it. So we can look into that for sure. Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments? All right. If there'd be none, what do we do? What's our next?
Continue it to, I think a motion, we continue this. Preview of the site plan to October 24th. At 7:20, the next slide.
7:20 PM.
Okay. I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Rich, seconded by Jeff, any discussion?
Seconded, sorry.
What happened?
I seconded.
Motion by Rich, seconded by Jeff, any more discussion? If there'd be none, I'll call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Great.
See you in about a month.
Can you give me one favor? Can you put the site plan up there again?
Yeah.
The proposed plan, just in case somebody wants to take a peek at it before they leave. I don't know why I thought of that, but. All right.
I think it is available through the Planning Department's website also, just in case somebody's paying attention.
I actually left my thumb drive with that, so unless she downloads it on the desktop.
Oh, that's all right. That's all right, well, we can look at it on there.
Yeah, it's online. Okay.
All right.
And the plans are available here.
Yeah, we have the full plans.
Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, action. Action items, review and approved approvals of the meeting minutes for August 8, 2022.
The minutes were sent out in very short notice, so whatever the desire of the board is, do apologize from our end, unfortunately, it was sent out in short notice today.
I'm fine with them. Yeah.
Does anybody have a, does anybody want to just push it off for the next meeting? You can do that, John.
I mean.
I read them.
We're going to approve the minutes on last meeting.
From.
I'm sorry, sorry. August 8. I'm sorry, August 8.
Those are the decisions on the.
Depot Road.
Depot Road. If you didn't read them, that's fine, you can put it off then.
Okay, so. Mark, are you fine?
I'm fine.
Okay. So anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rich, any discussion? If there'd be none, I'll call for the vote, I vote aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Aye.
All right. Okay, I read with one extension. Thank you.
They're grained in my head.
All right. I don't see any old business, new business or submission, put it on another page, right?
I think.
Oh, planning director report.
I think we took care of two warrant articles, but Tony mentioned warrant article 10.
If it is of interest to the board, we did provide a copy of the special town meeting warrant. And article number 10, the board may wish, could fall under the language pertaining to certainly land use, development, that the board shall provide, or may provide, I should say, recommendations if the board sees fit on any of the article items that fall under environment, planning, land use and so on. Article 10 pertains to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift or purchase piece of property owned by Southwood Realty Trust. This is the piece of.
Where is it?
I was like, I didn't.
Yeah, if you give me one moment, let me pull it up on the map. It'll be a lot easier.
I'm like, we never have one of those on as an article to purchase, right? Never.
Well, obviously the Conservation Commission, the town manager and Tony feel that it's a benefit to the town, so.
I think this is that little piece off of. That little piece of land off of Sutton Ave. Where the grain still used to be.
Where the.
Seed thing used to be.
Canoe, yeah, there used to be a garden shop and then.
Kind of like a seed thing or something.
Canoe kayak location.
Oh, that's the one.
He's there cleaning it up, right?
On French River, on the French.
Right across the street from old.
On Charlton Street, yeah.
Old whatever road that is.
Yeah, it used to be, that's what, like.
And it butts the.
French River?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's actually two parcels. It is this parcel. This parcel here.
A great place to put a boat launch.
82 Charlton, as well as.
Got to pull a few trees out of the river first before you, can't really get too far.
Relocate some.
As well as.
Something you'll have to contend with.
Relocate some beavers.
As well as this parcel across.
Over there too, on that side too?
Yes.
It's protecting your weapon, it's all right.
And it does.
It's unusable to the owners.
That's why the Conservation Commission is involved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's, why not? That's interesting.
Okay. The general plan here and led through the town manager's office and our conservation agent is in the bigger picture and a bigger scale, a eight-mile stretch of bike, multimodal bike path, taking advantage of a swath of stretch of land that connects from Webster to Auburn, largely owned by various owners, but in particular to the utility company. And in this key location, it's kind of a central spot, that location right on the river as a potential perhaps kiosk, information center, opportunity to, obviously there is existing parking there. It's a parcel that is very hard to develop and since the property owner has expressed some interest and we've had just some initial conversations with respect to what could be done there. And let again, our conservation agent has kind of sort of mapped out the, a very high-level sort of rendering of the trail along that area. But Charlton Street is, when it comes to traffic counts, it's very high. Lots of visibility there and this could be a very good showcase for the town as an information center, welcome center, whatnot. The, with respect to the land use and the idea of adding additional open space, it's always something that we're open to and to look at. So there would still be much work after. It would still require appraisals, still require title search and so on, but this is where it would start. And so the request would be, or the thought would be if the board wished to provide any recommendation, particularly as it relates to the land use certainly, right? And we do see this as an opportunity for increasing our network. It actually ties our network, our trail network, because it ties in nicely to the Army Corps site and the Midstate Trail as well. And longer-term, bigger vision, making future connections on the Webster side and on the Auburn side. It's pretty impressive.
So is the action to investigate, you know, get an appraisal, do a title search? Or is it to authorize the purchase?
So to be clear, the action is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire either by purchase or by gift. We'll say that the assessed value is under $100,000, perhaps around $80,000. Do believe that the title search and the appraisal as well would probably get closer to $90,000, $95,000 or so thousand. Although, you know, gift is on there, we would also be pursuing other grant, if there are grant opportunities as well for this type of project. There is no appetite to go out and bond for this and that is out of the article. So it would be ideally gift, but may be a purchase.
So we don't know if they're gonna gift it or gift it to us?
No, they have those options, all those options.
Just leaving those options on a gift purchase.
It's up to the selectmen to pursue this. We would be basically just endorsing the fact that those parcels would be.
So just like the other two items, right? We recommend or not recommending, right?
We're recommending the.
So you're gonna go to town meeting, Tony, and you're gonna, they're gonna ask you, well, how much you're gonna purchase it for? And I think that's gonna be a tough sell, because they're gonna say, well, you're saying $100,000, but you know, what about if they won't sell it to us?
The word gift is in there too. But it also.
No, but I just know.
My way of taxes is in there.
It is strange that there's not a number on it.
Southern Land Trust would be interested in.
There should probably be a number on it, right?
I just think he's gonna get so many, I think that opens it up to people asking questions. Okay, so how much is it gonna be? If you're gonna approve it, how much is it gonna be?
Well, but to Tony's point, if the town is not gonna bond it, that means we're not raising taxpayer dollars to purchase this. It's either gonna be, we obtain grants to purchase it or there's a tax benefit to the owner to make a gift to the town.
Okay.
So maybe that should be.
It makes sense.
Well, I'll be in Bermuda, so remember what I said.
Well, again, they're just looking for a recommendation, which I think is.
I think it's great, because he was there cleaning, I mean, he's been there for the past like two weeks cleaning that area off, like. for the past, like, two weeks cleaning that area off, like, because it was all overgrown.
Who, who, who had owned that? I can't remember his name.
It was, it was a flower shop, and then a couple years later, a, a Christmas tree guy came up, and he ran it for like one season, and then that was it.
Who, no. The guy who originally built it, do you remember his name? Because I thought I? He was like a local guy, right?
Was it Huedon? No?
No, it doesn't sound familiar.
I think she.
When there was, when there was activity on the site, it was sharp, it was, it was a good-looking store, and, but it's been empty for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, it's remarkable inside. I had the opportunity, I wish I was here back then to see how, to your point, I do definitely, very sharp. But in the interior, and I'm not a building inspector, as you folks know, but it actually looked really still well-built, and obviously, there's some TLC to rehab the building, but still very promising, and I was intrigued by hearing stories how they would use the water from the river to, to maintain the, the plantings and so on.
They had canoe rentals, too, right?
That's the first, the first thing was.
Yeah.
That was the first thing before, was a flower shop or anything else.
Yeah.
Then there was insurance issues with it. Well, I'll make a motion that we recommend this article at town meeting.
Okay, anybody want to make a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Rich, seconded by Chris, any more discussion? Call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Looks like we got the planners' report.
So just, just real brief, so for the next meeting, October 24th, we?
Oh, gosh, should we say we're not going to have a meeting on Columbus Day, or Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Indeed.
Or whatever that's being called, these days? Columbus Day?
October 10th. October 10th.
Got to vote, we have to vote for that?
Yeah.
All right, anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that a motion, that we, we cancel our meeting that? On October 10th. Occurs on the holiday, the Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'll second that.
Seconded by, motion by Rich, seconded by Jeff, any discussion? Call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Mark thought about it.
Uh, Mark's just keeping his powder dry, just keeping his powder dry.
And, and looking ahead, so as we all know about the special town meeting, but then for the meeting of October 24th, we, so far, we have four items on the agenda, which is the, at seven oh five, the continued public hearing for Harwood Street, so I hope in the coming weeks to, to, to get some updates on that, so, so we can review that, and then at seven ten is a public hearing for the in-law addition at 10 Cypress, which we scheduled that the last time we were together, and third would be the battery storage project, and hopefully by that point, we'll have all the peer review information and any other staff recommendations and so on, and last to close thus far, Cumberland Farms, again, hopefully with all the recommendations and so on. That's all that I have for now on that.
Quick question, I want to hold everybody up.
Sure.
How's, have, how's the construction going over on History Drive?
So we've been, we've been out there on the site, I was out there a week and a half ago or so, do expect to get a report from Graves Engineering, they're actually our, our field folks. Once we get the report, I'll, I'll share with the board.
Okay, but they're moving, moving along.
They're moving quickly.
Site's pretty clear.
Yeah, I went up there on Sunday, and I mean, he's, he's doing some big work, you can't go down it, but you can definitely see it's cleared.
Yeah, and then I do, oh, updates on Jackson Motors, and so I hope to have an update on the 24th.
So one of the members of the board asked me, remember, we've had a discussion about putting, like, more information, more of the packet information up on the website, is that in the works?
So we?
And we, and we talked about it, we knew it wasn't going to be like, yeah, let's do that, we'll be up there tomorrow, but?
Sure.
It's a process, so.
Yeah, so what we've done thus far is on the major projects, so the battery storage, Cumberland Farms, you can find them right online on, on the website. The other piece, too, so what we haven't included are some of like the in-laws and so on, we just haven't gotten to, to that, to that level, but the larger projects certainly. And then also, the, our, our folks over at PEG have done a great job, I don't know if anyone has, has noticed, but when you go online, onto the website, onto YouTube to view the meeting?
Yeah.
There's actually now an agenda feature, which I personally love, where those, if you just want to get to the item that you're interested in, you just click on the agenda feature, and it'll take you right there.
Wow.
And it just, instead of, so it's synced up very nicely, very, very nicely. I don't know how that stuff works, but it's very impressive.
So I will, I will also say that, and you guys have probably already done it, but I went on the town website, and I signed up for the information, you know, you check what you want here, the selectmen, the planning board, and I like the emails that you get, that here's the planning board agenda, here's a selectman's agenda, you know, it's pretty interesting, convenient.
I'll check that out, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's, you get it right in your email box, look at it, here's, here's the agenda, here's?
So is it on the main website?
Yep, you just sign up on the main. Yep, you just have to give your email address.
That's the YouTube one.
You just give your social security and your mother's maiden name, and then you're good. Sorry. Anything else?
I'm looking for the YouTube.
Don't forget, we have a town meeting next Wednesday.
Yes. Right around the corner.
You're going to be there, right?
I know, I'm going to be there.
Are you going to be there?
Someone's going to bring it, whether it's going to be Tony, you're going to be there, someone's going to bring this stuff aside.
Absolutely, and that's at the middle school this year.
They changed.
Why is it at the middle school?
Normally, the high school.
I don't know the answer. I don't know.
Yeah, my high school, too, yeah.
I just go where it's told.
Don't be selfish.
You're going to be there?
I'm going to be there. Why do you, why do you look, why do you look so surprised when you say that, Chris?
Has he been there?
No, he's, he's the chairman now, he's got to sign the paperwork, so.
Was he? I mean, he's a child, he's there.
I get to talk, too, because we go, Wannaboo.
You get the same, you get the same.
We recommend. Chris, anything else to say tonight?
Nope, that's it. I'd like to, uh, to call for a meeting to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Chris, seconded by Jeff, any discussion? If there being none, you call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Aye.